Hey friends, sorry I'm just reconnecting. Okay, great, we reconnected. Hi, welcome. You are watching No Heretics channel. So today, we are going to tune in live to the Santee City Council meeting, which this is all in behalf of, this is all happening in behalf of seventeen-year-old Rachel Phillips, who had an experience of a man in the women's locker room at the YMCA. Of course, events happening around the YMCA are very personal to me after the Let Julie Swim event that I organized this past August. I am watching the live feed right now. I am tuned into their live feed. They, they said that they were gonna start their, their event at 6:30, but they have not yet started their event. So I thought that as I'm waiting for them to go live, I am gonna go ahead and share some info with you. And actually, hold on, I'm just gonna cross tweet this as well, that we are going live. I'm gonna put this tweet up for people who may, who may want to join. So just bear with me as I do that and tell people we are live now. Okay, and I'm doing that. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna fill some time while we are waiting for their council meeting to start. I am, they, they are in the city council meeting, but I am tuned into their live channel and the council meeting has not yet started unless Chikana Feminist, you're seeing it started. If you're watching their lives, I'm, I'm on the city council page, so I see their livestream and it hasn't, it hasn't turned on yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna refresh it just to make sure. Yeah, no, they are not live as of yet. But we, as soon as they go live, I'll switch to, I'll switch to putting them on, on my screen. Oh, and here we go. Okay, actually now we are going live. Hold on. It is happening. I thought I was gonna fill time and maybe I'm not. Okay, so they, they are just getting started.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Apparently we have a full house. Here's the only bad part about that. I've been notified by the fire marshal that we need to make sure that all these aisle ways are clear so that in case of an emergency. So if, you know, that means you have to, you know, kinda double up in a spot or whatever, or and some people might even, you'll be able to hear us if you go out into the hallway or even outside, I believe you can hear.
Okay, so I just turned him down. I'm gonna turn him down for just a second. Because I just wanna say, I don't know what business they're gonna start with, so let's, let's listen in. We'll see what business they're gonna start with. I have a couple of other videos keyed up just in case we need to fill time if they start with other town business. I have the video of Rebecca that I wanna share. I wanna share her original testimony at that very first city council meeting in Santee, California. And then I also have testimony that I wanna share from the last event that happened with Christine Wood, Mr. Wood. So I wanna share his testimony as well. So I'm gonna just tune back in to see what he says their order of operations is gonna be. And I'm not getting volume on him.
Ninety zero Summit Avenue, right here in Santee. Gary is married and the father of four children and eleven grandchildren.
Yay Gary.
The church members regularly pray for the city council and its members. And for this, we are very grateful. And so we say welcome once again. So, once again, please pray for us tonight and pray for our country and those people that protect us across the nation and the world. So please rise for.
Okay, so they're gonna say the pledge of allegiance and actually, so while they're doing that, oh, I'm gonna, meant to push play. While, while they're doing this, I'm gonna bring something else on screen because I wanna start with, oh wait, what's he saying? Yeah, okay.
Very grateful for the freedoms that have been purchased.
Oh, he's, he's praying. Okay, so I'm gonna bring up Christine, I'm sorry, I'm gonna bring up Rebecca. Where am I? Sorry, I'm losing touch with where I am. Okay, I'm gonna stop that screen and I'm gonna present this other screen. Okay, so I want you to see, I want you to see Rebecca's original testimony. And then, I don't know if they're gonna do something after their pledge of allegiance, but we'll check back in with them. Her testimony is just three minutes, so I think we should hear it first. I think it will ground us in what is happening at the Santee event today.
Behind me. My name is Rebecca Phillips and I'm seventeen years old. I am not a resident of Santee, but I am employed at a local restaurant, The Almond Factory, and I work out regularly at the Santee YMCA. Just two weeks ago, after finishing my shift at my job, I went to the gym to swim laps. As I was showering after my workout, I saw a naked male in the women's locker room. I immediately went back into the shower terrified and hid behind their flimsy excuse for a curtain until he was gone. I ran into a bathroom stall to change as quickly as I could, organizing my thoughts to share with the people at the front desk. As I did so, I could only think of my five-year-old sister, who I bring to this gym during the summer to, sorry, to enjoy their water slides. This is the YMCA, where hundreds of children spend their summer afternoons in childcare camps. This is the YMCA where my little sister took gymnastics lessons. The locker room was supposed to be her safe haven to gossip with her friends and shower and change. When I asked the YMCA management what their policy was regarding transgenders, they confirmed that the man that I saw was indeed allowed to shower wherever he pleased. As long as you were not a red flag on Megan's Law, this California Sex Offender Registry, a grown male can shower alongside a teenage girl at your YMCA location here in Santee. I was made to feel as though I had done something wrong when I talked to people at the YMCA. Somehow, the indecent exposure of a male to a female minor was an inconvenience to them. When my dad spoke to the sheriff's office, they told him that he should never allow me to shower there ever again. The YMCA wouldn't let my father speak to the manager of the Santee branch. After waiting several days, he finally received a call from Terry Moss, who is the director of membership for San Diego County. She informed my dad that I was not in any danger at the time of the incident, that I was safe. But I ask you this, I'm assuming all of you either have a wife, a sister, daughters or granddaughters, or are a woman yourself. Could you knowingly send an underage girl into a room where there was a naked male and say that she was not in danger, that she was safe, or more importantly, that this was right? The fact that we are now tailoring our privacy policies and bathroom laws around transgenders, ignoring the blatant threat to safety that this poses is obscene. The safety of children, girls, is on the chopping block. And this issue is not unique to one political party. Both Democrats and Republicans whom I have shared this story with have all been equally disgusted. So I implore you all to take action. With great privilege comes great responsibility. Whether it's requiring transgenders to use the single-stall family restrooms or making them use the bathroom which aligns with their biological trends.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so that was Rebecca in her own words and, yeah, I'm gonna go to this one, I think, or minimal, let's see. Let's see, bubble, I think this one is the lowest one. So I think that was Rebecca speaking on her own behalf. Also, just so you know, I am still watching. I have the other, the current city council meeting. They are doing a proclamation right now where the, the mayor is sort of shaking hands and glad handing. He's giving an award to someone. So we'll, we'll come back to them as soon as they start, as soon as they start having the public speak on this, we'll go back to it. But I, I thought it was really important to have Rebecca speaking in her own words, so you could see her, get an idea of her. And this is, this is who we're, we're standing up for. This, this is on whose behalf they're speaking. So tonight at the rally, or at, sorry, not at the rally, at the, at the city council, what is gonna be happening, an organization called Rooted Wings is organizing to urge the city council to remove the lease that they are giving the Y. They are basically giving the Y right now practically a free lease. I think it's like, the city is charging them about a dollar a month. It's, it's something, you know, it's, it's basically because the Y is sort of a, not a chair, a nonprofit organization, I guess I should say. So they're a nonprofit, so the city has been basically gifting them with this lease. And these city councilmen, these, these town members rather are going to, they are, they are basically going to urge the city council to remove that lease. So that, that is what we are seeing today. And yeah, I, I do always urge everyone to call a man a man. Men are not women. We, we don't have to call them women. They, they are absolutely men. And I do love seeing everyone here today. Rex Landy, I heard it is your happy birthday today. So happy birthday to you, Ms. Landy. I hope that you had a lovely day today. It's very special to have you here with us this evening. I'm gonna, okay, so he's still giving an award to this guy. Alright, that is what's happening. So I think the other thing, the next thing that I wanna do, since he is still giving that award, I wanna have you see Christine Wood in his own words and what he says. So this is from my livestream of him and I'm gonna push play on this, so you can hear him speak about himself. Oh shoot, I hope you guys can hear that. Can you guys hear that?
Retiree after twenty-nine years of civil service with Gulf and Human Services Agency. I'm a member of the Cameron YMCA for about a year now. Absolutely love my water aerobics classes here. Those classes have helped me lose sixty pounds in the last year and the health benefits have been phenomenal. It appears that I inadvertently caused quite a scandal on the morning of Thursday, December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, after another wonderful class. And by the way, they're all great classes. I had just showered, dressed and helped our instructor Peggy. Wish her and some of my other aqua sisters a wonderful new year and reported the locker room for Palm Springs. It was on the morning of Thursday, December twelfth, that my aqua sister Vicky called to say, Chrissy, I'm so sorry about what happened last night in Santee. I replied, what happened? Her answer was, oh my God, you don't know, do you? Let me send you the Instagram video. I watched it and I collapsed in tears. Since then, the amount of organized hatred and lies to vilify and demonize me and other members of the transgender community has truly been disheartening and disgusting. I'm here to spread the light of truth in the face of these sinocracies. I'm a mom, a grandma.
No, you are not. No, you are not. You're not a mom.
I am a threat to no one. In the year I've been a member of the Y children that attended summer camp and have been with their parents and grandparents in the women's locker room with me, and there has never, ever been an incident, ever. Not until one was manufactured using this form to do so. Transgender is simply a medical condition, as is my need to wear corrective lenses when I drive, my high blood pressure and my type two diabetes. I am fully transitioned, asking to be confirmed with my doctorate, which was after my gynecologist. I am sorry that this form is previously used to spread lies and a hateful, bloodiful agenda. God bless you all for this opportunity. And in the words of my angel, a wild woman, a wild, thank you, a wise woman wishes to be no one's enemy and a wise woman refuses to be anyone's victim. I am a threat to no one. Bless you all and thank you.
So that is gonna be a no from me and a no from all of us. We don't, we don't take men's word for it. We don't, we don't just have men tell us, I'm a threat to no one. I don't take your word for it. I trust my own eyes and ears. And any of you who were at last, two weeks ago's city council, you saw that when Rebecca went to report this to the staff, she was told by staff members, no, you were wrong. You don't get to trust your own eyes and ears. You don't get to trust what you saw with your own eyes. You were wrong. So this girl, this seventeen-year-old girl was gaslit by the adults in the room. This man is not a mom. He's not a mom. He's not a grandmother. And he is not a zero-threat situation. So I wanna show you one more thing. I'm still, just so you know, I'm still checking in with the current city council meeting. There's still an award situation. I guess there must be a couple of awards being given out. I see them. I'm, I'm keeping an eye on it while I'm doing other things, just, just so you know. We're not missing anything. The city council meeting has started, but we're going to go there. Did you? My, my reactions are part of it. My, my reactions are part of the city council meeting. Aw, I love it. Thank you. You've got turf mail. That's, that's hilarious. So I want to, I wanna show you this. I don't know if everyone saw this. This is a Redux article written by Genevieve Gluck. So she did some deep diving into this guy. First of all, we know that this is a scam that he has done before. So he, he actually did this to a Crunch Fitness, sued them, had this same little spiel. Oh, I lost sixty pounds doing my water aerobics. This is literally the same spiel that he's done before. And Genevieve went on a deep dive into his social media and he has very disturbing pictures of little girls all over his social media. So I'm just gonna scroll through some of this and we can, we can look at it. And then he has marked these, this is Christine as a little girl. So he has all these pictures of little girls up. And he has marked them as, let's see, yeah, see, so here's some other pictures. Christine as a little girl and these sort of hyper-sexualized little, little girls calling himself a little girl. What he would look like as a little girl. Here's another one. And even women on his page said sexualizing a child is wrong. Wood responded, not everyone agrees that this is a sexualization of a child. I disagree with your interpretation. So the, these are very, I mean, look at this girl. She's a very adult look. I mean, she's literally posed on a car with a coffee, you know, in, in this shoulder revealing image. Now, he had other images on his Facebook page such as these of women who are bound gagged in these sexualized staged kidnappings. So this is very disturbing. Also, he has this kind of thing about forced feminization on his page. So this is also something that he is doing. This is a great article by Genevieve Gluck. We thank you Genevieve. We thank you Redux Magazine for doing this investigative work. This is, this is how we all work together. So I just wanted you all to see that. So when he tells us, when he makes the claim that he is not a threat to no one, listen, did you hear how he even said that? Listen to my voice. I am not a threat to anyone. Like, that's very Jeffrey Marcious. It's very sinister in its vibe. It's very disturbing. So I, I really don't appreciate. Okay, so they're, oh my gosh, so now, oh my gosh. Okay, I'm gonna put them still on screen so we can keep checking in, but now there's some sort of a cheer squad. There's some sort of a cheer squad that's getting an award. I'm gonna put them, I'm gonna put them on the screen so that we can, we can stay tuned with what's going on currently. But we do know that they're gonna be starting very soon to get to the public testimony, but I'm gonna put them on screen so that we can see what's going on with them. That way, we'll just, we'll just keep them on in the background and we'll notice, we'll notice when they're ready to speak. I'm gonna actually remove, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put myself up. I'm gonna put myself up and I'm just gonna have them in my screen down below. We won't have to look at them right now. Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll post that article to Facebook. Yeah, let me see. I can open my Facebook and post it. I assume you're in the, the livestream on Facebook. Yeah, it's a lot of Darvo. Just, also, just so you know, I, because I have, some of your comments are getting hidden. Now that I'm looking on my YouTube, oh, a lot of comments are getting hidden. I'm, I'm unhiding the comments. I just unhid them and I usually go back and unhide them, just so everyone knows. I, I, I have them on hidden because I do, I do have Twitter monet, I'm sorry, YouTube monetization now. And, and so it automatically chooses a high, it chooses a, like a high alert value. So it, it, it censors a lot of things that I wouldn't necessarily censor, but it like holds them. So I guess it doesn't interrupt my, my, what do you call it, my, my monetization ability. And I actually, I do wanna plug myself right now. So I pay for StreamYard, which is a livestream service. I pay for the professional service so that I can livestream to my, my Twitter and my YouTube and my Facebook all at once. And I can, I could use people's support. I, it's, every little support is really helpful and I love putting up these livestreams. It's, it's really my pleasure to make sure that we have a watch party to watch these events together and comment on them together. I think it is really important, an important thing to do. But I, I could always use support in making sure that can continue to happen because it is, it is something I pay for on my own. And I'm gonna post the Redux article to, I'm just gonna post it right to my Facebook page. I, I'm not gonna post it in the, the Facebook Live chat. But that way, anyone, you can go to the top of my Facebook page now. It's there and anyone can of course see it on on Redux's page. And I'm gonna, I'll post it here too. So now it's also posted in the YouTube chat. Okay, so I think they're starting. We're gonna go to them. Okay, they're gonna, let's see if they're starting. I'm gonna unmute them.
Our own cheerleader. Now you know why I had her do that. Oh, so, so we need to get down to business here and we wanna get out of here at some type of a decent hour. So that takes us to the consent calendar. And do I have any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you Laura.
Not for me.
Councilmember Trotter?
Yes sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
No Mr. Mayor, I do not.
I have none. City manager?
Yes sir.
City attorney?
Yes sir.
City clerk?
I have one speaker on item four.
Item four, okay, we will, do I have a motion to accept the calendar, consent calendar, except for item number four? Which we'll hear right after. Have a motion and a second. Please prepare to vote and lock in the votes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number four, which is an adoption of a resolution authorizing a submittal of a grant application to the federal raise, which is rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and equity. Grant program for the state Route fifty-two improvements and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Who's gonna give us a report on that?
So I have a speaker, Hassan or Alan? See, Alan? Reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Mayor. My name is Alan C. This is a long time coming. Since nineteen eighty-seven, Transnet, we've been paying half since sales tax. I love this. Actually, actually putting money in the roads. We must remember, since nineteen eighty-seven, we voted for roads, for all.
Okay, I'm gonna mute his testimony because we don't care about that. I want to say, we know that, I don't know if anyone follows. I believe this woman in the background is from Rooted Wings. I'm gonna put up the Twitter handle. I'm gonna put up her, I'm gonna put up a couple of Twitter handles that are there live at the event that have, that I have been in contact with. Okay, Rooted, I'm just searching them on my Twitter. So this woman is there, Rooted Wings, who is going to speak. She is, she is one of the ones who organized this event. And I'm also gonna put up, there is a, I think, Chikana Feminist, you just said his name Blake, Blake is his name. But he is, he has a gay Republican organization and that is his Twitter handle. So he is also there speaking. And the, they have organized this in, in support of Rebecca, who I showed earlier. Okay, so let's see here. I'm gonna unmute now.
Oh, by the way, if it turns out that it's more appropriate under another item on the agenda, I'll go ahead and stop you and have you wait till that item. Does that work for you?
I mean, that's.
Okay, thanks.
You know?
Cause we wanna make sure that all the testimony is in the right spot.
Absolutely. Don't wanna make a mistake. So, so with Sandag, as Alan was saying, you know, what's been going on, how they've been electing the board has been something where they can make sure that whoever is enforcing this stuff is complying with those who are telling them what to do. Because the Assembly Member Lorraine Gonzalez introduced AB eight oh five, which was enacted and it gave San Diego forty-two percent and Chilavas eight percent of all votes. Does that sound fair? Probably not, right? But the problem is, is that we're having vehicle miles, travel taxes. Okay, so I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna not listen to her as well, so I can interact with you all. I think, I did, I don't know if you all heard, the city council member told her that he would, he would save her to talk later if she wasn't speaking on the right event. And I think that he may have made the assumption that I would probably make because with her, her haircut and her hairstyle and her hair color, that, that perhaps she was going to speak on the issue of the man in the women's bathroom. Yes, I do love her hairstyle. I love her haircut. I used to, I don't know if you all know, when I first started doing this activism, I had turquoise hair. I had really bright turquoise hair, but I, I changed my hair because I felt like hair color, that, that kind of bright colorful hair color, it started making me think that it was associated with like non-binary identity. So I stopped doing it. But I do, I like, I like that shaved head, side of her head look. Let's see, so to be truthful, thank you Laura. I wanted to say thank you Laura and thank you Swiki Turf. I really, I really appreciate it. And you got turf mail, as she's also says, it really helps me and it helps my algorithm if you like the video. And always, just so you know, also, it really helps if you leave a comment, not in the livestream, but if you leave a comment, comment, that also helps my algorithm. So little things like this, like I know not everyone can give because I know other people have tight finances like myself. So I know it's not possible for everyone to donate monetary support, but you can always support by just literally hitting like, literally sharing these videos and leaving comments because that, that helps my, my algorithm out. Yeah, I know you, you've got turf mail. You always are leaving comments and I really appreciate it. And I love interacting with you all. So I'm, I'm really excited to, oh, it won't. Oh, you know what Christina, I should have said Twitter is having some weird problems tonight. I couldn't open any of my messages on Twitter. I don't know why that is, but that definitely Uh, I don't know why that is, but that definitely, uh, was, was happening to me today. So I don't know, I don't know what is going on with that. And I heard other people saying they couldn't open their messages, so that there might be some issues, uh, with Twitter going on today. Um, yeah, well, Bina, the, um, unfortunately, our spaces, of course, we know they are disappearing. It's so upsetting to see. Um, you know, women, uh, women need to have spaces for ourselves. And May, I have gotten this comment also in the past. Um, I do need to, I will start timestamping these, um, because I know that they are hard to watch. And I am gonna go backwards. So I don't know if anyone saw, I did, um, testimony earlier this week. So I did, um, actually, maybe I'll play that right now. I did testimony earlier this week from, uh, in Washington State. I testified for the Washington State Senate. It was bill number 5599. This was a bill, uh, that had to, it pertained to, um, runaway youth and it would allow, uh, shelters to withhold, uh, the child's location from the parents. It also was gonna withhold, um, medical needs, uh, from the parents. So a child could basically, um, uh, have their location withheld from the parents and they would be able to access, uh, gender-affirming care, uh, as well as abortions without parental consent. Also, it would, uh, allow those shelters to house children in opposite-sex housing, again, without parental consent. Uh, so I testified in the negative for that bill. Um, and Erin Brewer testified, Ollie London testified, a ton of people testified. Uh, so I will, uh, Dawn Land of, uh, Sovereign Women Speaks testified. So I'm gonna go back through that footage and I'll tag where people that I wanna highlight, uh, testified because a lot of, um, basically, you know, Turfs we know, uh, testified. And it was really cool to see that influencer, Ollie London testify as well. Okay, so, uh, let's see, I don't know what they're doing right now. Um, so maybe I'm just gonna share my testimony. Wait, no, he's coming back. Okay, let's see what he's saying now.
In excess of forty, speaker slips on that?
Yes.
So tonight, uh, we will, um, be given two minutes. Uh, but we do have, um, to take care of our, um, community development block grant, uh, issues. And, yeah, you know, I don't think we need to have those folks sitting here for nearly two hours before they get a chance to speak. So what we're going to do is follow our regular protocol, which is we take either five speakers or we go the first round of non-agenda public comment for 15 minutes. So we can get seven speakers in for the first round of non-agenda public comments. So that's what we're going to do. And, uh, I know that there's some people that, uh, are opposed to, um, the application, uh, for, uh, community block grant funding for the YMCA. Uh, we want to make it clear, they have withdrawn their application, so they won't be in consideration for any money from the city of Santee. Um, so, um, so what I do ask though, again, tonight though, is if we can all be very respectful of one another, because it's important for everybody to be heard. Doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on here, please allow everybody to have their two minutes and hear what's being said. So I thank you very much for that. Clerk, would you call the first person?
Blake? You have two minutes, the microphone will be turned off after your two minutes.
I am a homeowner within an HOA in the Hillcrest neighborhood of San Diego City. All Santee residents must request their city council member not renew the Santee government's or city's $1 lease with the YMCA, and the YMCA must then relocate to private land. The city is designing a government recreation center or center that will be operating near the current YMCA. The city must take over the operation of the pool structure, which the city already owns and incorporate it into the design of the new center. I'm a normal, out, gay, and biological male. I will explain one of the many points on why it is extremely important that the Democratic Party and all individuals become proud, anti-trans persons like I am. We all must be pro-healthy gay male community and support detransitioners and LGBT Alliance USA. There is a natural experience that 100% of gays uniquely experienced during childhood called gay-induced opposite-sex envy or envy. The envy is experienced to varying degrees based on different environmental factors. Psychological associations or associations in gay men and lesbians are completely hiding this from the general public. The envy concept is most likely hidden to avoid outing closeted gay kids or kids, or hidden because of substantial shame. The unethical silence by associations and gays has created fake gender identity ideology, fake trans identifiers, and trans the gay way. Any gay or person with strong same-sex attraction feelings who states they never felt the envy during childhood is a zero-courage liar or has an extremely poor memory. Kids are not receiving the proper psychotherapy treatments they need when they struggle to self-manage their envy. The envy concept is being unethically and improperly labeled by associations as fake gender dysphoria. Associations are encouraging sex identity disorder in many kids and turning them into lifelong victims and cash cows for the healthcare industry. Currently, in California, minors are getting their penises removed and breasts removed. Biological trans or true trans do not exist.
Next speaker I have is Alan C.
I have a slide presentation.
Alan, before you get started, um, if we could hold the applause, because it's a little bit hard for us to hear up here who the next speaker's being called during the applause. So I know everybody really wants to, um, you know, uh, support the speakers, but let's make it easy for us up here. Or, or yeah, there you go. How about just one clap even? Cause I want you to be able to express yourselves. So, great. So, thank you. Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a slide presentation. I wish it was up on the big board, but it's not. The public, it isn't a binder, my slide presentation PowerPoint. So I'll try to rattle through these. Uh, what's going on with the YMCA and all gyms is actually a, a law. FE, FEHA law 2017 requires use of any restroom by any gender identity without, without need of going through surgery. Slide two. Anybody remember Weespa about, back in 21? I don't know what the status in this gentleman, whatever you wanna call for YMCA, but back in 2000, the same scenario happened at Weespa up in LA. In that case, the man claiming to be a woman went to the kids restroom in the shower area and the LAPD waited six months later to admit the guy was already registered as a sex offender. Next slide, please, which, uh, it's, it's on your screen, you wanna see. Liberty Health right now has 151 sex offenders registered in a three-mile radius near my community. How many are in this community that are, we're paying, getting free home for life funded by the taxpayers? Worst criminals. How many of them sex offenders are not being monitored? Will take advantage of this system, claim they're a woman, and use that kids restroom? Next slide. However, you have an outlet here. The 2017 law also requires our referendum to respect the privacy interests of all employees. Employees shall provide feasible alternatives such as locking toilet stalls, and I repeat, staggered scheduled for showering. YMCA, why aren't you picking up on this instead of saying inclusive and gender for all? When you are required to have staggered showers, just like the malls have for family restrooms. The YMCA must have staggered showering when the kids are present. Me, as an adult man, I would never go into a shower room when there are kids there. That is wrong, that's the fight. Cause you'll never win against a trans, you never gets race, do it for the children. Because what's been happening is wrong, how much time they got? Six seconds? And by the way, the dollar? He's got a gym, how come he doesn't get a dollar and he has to pay full rent? So it's not right for the YMCA to get that. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Marcy Strange.
Taxpayers demand you either cancel the YMCA's free use of Santee city property, or dollar, or force the YMCA to keep biological men out of women and girls' private areas. Please, put this, their lease renewal on next month's agenda. In addition to being a member of Gays Against Groomers, I'm also a taxpayer and a mom. As a former coed YMCA soccer coach, I believe in equity. However, equity does not mean extreme privileges for some. Biological women and little girls must have their own private spaces. Transgenders have theirs too. It's called gender-neutral bathrooms, as well as staggered private, private areas you just mentioned. When women and girls share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with biological men, what could possibly go wrong? One, it makes it easier for groomers and sexual predators to pose as transgenders. Two, it also gives harmless pren, transgenders a bad reputation. Three, males who identify as women have resulted in rape and sexual assault, not just in high school restrooms and bathrooms and locker rooms, but the same policies as the YMCA has in prisons too. California law conflict with each other, so nobody's safe. Today, indecent exposure is legal if a man identifies as a woman? Really? That's not what taxpayers paid for or voted for. Biological genders must be separated and given, excuse me, their own private spaces. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Susan Ash. And if everybody can remember to speak into the microphone, so the record picks it up, please.
Susan, I'm very nervous. It's my first meeting I've ever attended or spoken at. I first asked that you please put the YMCA lease topic on next meeting's agenda. I am a taxpayer, a mom, a natural-born biological woman. I am XX chromosome American. I felt absolutely compelled to speak here tonight. I do live in East County and my daughters attended the YMCA for many years. I'm asking the city of Santee terminate the lease with the YMCA until they correct the dangers their current system has in place regarding women and children. I never dreamed we women would be set back so far, so fast, and watch our children also be put in this very dangerous position. I am here tonight to explain how deeply concerned I am about the diminishing rights and value we natural-born biological women have across our society. Privacy and a reasonable expectation of safety in our shower facilities, changing and dressing rooms, and bathroom facilities is common sense and must be ensured and guaranteed in certain settings. This is not negotiable. No one should have to deal with indecent exposure on a regular basis, but that is what is going on, what is being proposed, and the precedent being set. We live in the real world. There is real evil, it is real and not imagined. Violent sexual predators, pedophiles, and child molesters will use and do use any loophole to further target, harm, and abuse natural-born women. Our tax dollars that we contribute are being used against us to diminish us and furthermore, put us in danger in harms way. Our government, corporations, schools, colleges, and tax dollars cannot be used to cater to every boutique issue and group. It's a very slippery slope with no end in sight. The rush to over-accommodate certain groups diminishes safety for women and children, the most vulnerable in society.
The next speaker I have is Ben Richards.
All right. Good evening, I'm Ben, and, uh, I'm the founder of SoCal Parent Advocates. I'm not anti-LGB, I'm not anti-trans. I was here in the last city council meeting. Uh, very proud to have so many patriot friends doing their civic duty because we need to stand up about what's going on here. And the fact of the matter is, there are some people who in this militant trans community, that no matter how many bathrooms you make for them. It can have a golden toilet with heated seats and a bidet and a rain shower. They don't wanna use that bathroom. They wanna use the locker room where our daughters go in, right? So I'm here to say that this is violent towards me and my boundaries and my family. So I'm here standing up. Here's an interesting thing. This division, right here, I was just up in Oceanside Uni, uh, Unified. It's the same thing there. Before that, I was in Temecula Valley. And as a veteran, I am very sad to see this. But I don't know the way forward. I asked Mr. Mayor some questions like legislatively. You know, I know there's legislative things that are tying our hands, but I do know this. It's wrong and I will continue barreling forward, yard by yard, because this is not right for my family and the families of these parents back here. So I'm going to do a call to action. Our movement is growing and we're gonna have to pick sides now. So to everyone, you need to get on social media. This is how we organize. This is how we organize in this region. And I'm gonna say this, we need to bring faith back in the families because I've been starting to read the Bible to my children and we're gonna armor them up against this ideology. Thank you all.
Next speaker I have is Kos or Los, L-O-S. The next speaker? It's L-O-S or COS, Lexit San Diego?
So Lexit is the one, uh, that organized that other rally. They, they organized, I don't know if you guys tuned into the rally?
Can I step in for him? I'm, uh, from.
You submitted a speaker slip?
Yeah.
Right when he did, what was the name?
Ryan?
We'll switch it up.
All right, um, hey, guys, um, I just wanted to come up here and it was good to hear the news that, um, that you guys suspended the lease for the YMCA for now. But like, we need to continue to pursue, um, to do the right thing. Um, you know, I, 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 I have, I'm a parent, you know, I have a, a daughter. And, uh, I wanna protect and to speak up at least to protect my daughter. And, uh, you know, it's just really weird to see the news going on these days, how dark it's getting. And, um, I would just encourage to, um, seek the Lord right now because the Bible speaks about what to do for our instructions on life. And, um, America was founded on biblical principles. So we should, um, if, we should do well to look back and see where this country started and where we're going. See, because right now, the, 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 um, basically, you guys are in charge with a big high wall, you know, and it's like breaking down slowly, but you don't see it. So like, God's gonna break it if we don't stop and look and assess what's going on, you know? So what's going on is darkness. And, um, you know, I just wanna say like, with the last, uh, like encouragement, um, to give you guys is that Israel, you know, is a nation that we can look to also. If you don't wanna look to the Bible, you can look to God's people, right? If you wanna go to church, that'd be a good place to start. But Israel started this, uh, nation. And if you guys wanna know more about that, just look at the Bible and the Constitution. So if you guys think that, um, it's not gonna change, we're gonna keep going, it's gonna grow, the movement's gonna happen, you know, whether we like it or not, you know? Because we're standing up for what's right and it's not gonna stop, you know, until Jesus comes back. So God bless you guys and thank you for my, for spending time.
The next speaker I have is Alicia. Alicia?
So I wish that they would just like keep that to themselves and keep to the facts because they, they make it about an ideology versus an ideology. And I feel like we're coming from facts, not ideology.
Um, and please put the YMCA, uh, agenda for next week. Uh, we will be back. You guys said that the lease is terminated, but we wanna make sure.
You, you know, I need to, uh, clarify that. We have not done anything with the lease.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know where that came up.
Okay. Um, well, city council, it's a shame that we have to come here and protest peacefully. Obviously, your godly values have been pushed to the side. We are here to remind you, God's values needs to be priority, as the children should be priority. Please protect the children from harm. Uh, please protect the women as well. God says in His Word, Luke 17, verse 2, "It will be better for them to be thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." We don't wanna come back and do this again. I mean, we're taking time from our family, we're taking time from our rest. And we're gonna keep coming here to this, um, here in Santee and keep doing this wherever, with any city. This is what Lexit does. So this is what we're gonna keep doing, and we're gonna keep pushing. We're gonna keep coming up here. We're gonna keep speaking. We're gonna keep peacefully protesting wherever we have to go. And we just hope that this changes, and we just hope that you have, you know, common sense. These children need to be protected. The women need to be protected. I'm a survivor of a child molestation, and I'm a rape survivor as an adult. And this is why I'm here. I don't want to see any other child be hurt or any woman be hurt again. This is something that we're gonna keep on speaking on and keep on doing. So God bless you.
No further speakers?
So one of the things that I think that we need to do is to somehow make some points of contact with these people and help them make better points.
Item number eight, which is a public hearing to assess community development needs and to solicit proposals for program year 2023 Community Development Block Grants, also known as CDBG, and home program funding consistent with the Consolidated Plan and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Good morning, Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor Koval and City Council members. This is the first of two public hearings to identify community needs and prioritize.
Okay, I don't know. I'm gonna hang out here with you guys for a second. I think they, I can't tell. So I don't know if you guys caught what he said. I thought that he said there was 40 people to speak on that issue. That didn't seem like 40 people. But I also heard him say he was gonna go back and forth. Yeah, that was my question, Christina. I think he's gonna go back and forth, because what I heard, and I think you all heard it, that he said there were 40 people to speak on this issue. But he said he didn't want other people to have to wait all night to speak. So I think he said he was gonna go back and forth, back and forth. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna have us reflect. We can talk. We can discuss about what's going on. I'll leave that up on the screen so that we can kind of see when more people are getting up to speak. Yeah. Oh, he said, he said seven off the first agenda. Did everyone understand that to mean that he was gonna let seven people speak, then other people speak, and then he would let seven more speak? That's what I thought he meant. I do think it was a really great crowd. I really liked what other people, what everyone was saying for the most part. So this is what I was gonna respond to. Obviously, you know, and I, you know, anyone who is religious in my current audience, bless you. I think that everyone, you know, needs to have their own personal spirituality, whatever that is for you. And the "and" that I have to say is that we need to we need to help these people who are coming from the place of their religion and their spirituality. We need to help them have arguments that stick to the facts, because one of the things that I really tried to do, and I'm actually gonna, I'm gonna put this in the background. I'm gonna put myself in the foreground while they have a PowerPoint on. I'm watching. I'll be watching it at the bottom of my screen, but you don't have to watch it. They have a PowerPoint going on. But one of the points that I tried to make with my Let Julie Speak event is I really wanted to counter the narrative that they were trying to tell about me. So I was trying to counter that narrative by doing the opposite of what they were saying about me. So they were saying, you know, of course, they were saying I was anti-trans and that I was a horrible TERF and that I was this. So when I told everyone to give their speeches, what I really tried to do was I said, I said, "I don't want anyone to say the name of the boy, the young man, who was in locker room. Don't say his name. I don't want you to talk about him. I don't want you to say the word trans. I don't want you to say the word gender. I don't want you to talk about any of that. I just want you to focus on women and girls and sex-based safeguarding for women and girls." Because what I really wanted to do at the end of the day, and when I went to my city council, I was able to say this. I wanted to be able to say that we were there the whole time, speaking in the positive. We were speaking for women and girls. So that at the end of the day, there would be nothing that they could quote from any of us that was anti-anything or anti-anyone. I wanted to lay a groundwork that subverted the narrative that they were telling about me, because I have to live in this town. And so I did as much as I could to subvert that narrative, so that when, for example, I got up to speak at the city council meeting, I could say to them with a very clear conscience, "You told all of these lies about me. You said that I was this, but you never addressed my points. I never, I never said any of the things that you claimed I was saying. Here's what I actually said, and you have avoided addressing my points because you were telling these lies about me." And I think that our good strategy in general is to subvert their narrative. So the other narrative, of course, that is already happening is that people say that this is a right-wing, ultra-conservative religious issue. What do you mean? It may be worth checking this and perhaps running through it online? Wait, which part? Which part is worth checking through online? Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going forward. But we need to help give religious people arguments that subvert the narrative. So we can help give them ways to subvert the narrative, because we frankly do need everyone in this. Like, it can't just be a small group of women. It can't just be some feminists and GC women. We have to find ways to include other people on this, and hopefully, we can give them the tools to create better arguments. Thank you, friends. I thank you for your compliments. That's why I come. That's why I show up. Okay, I'm gonna go back to them. Hold on. Okay, let's see what she's talking to.
To the front, so that we can move along. Thanks. Go ahead, Deborah.
Well, this is an unusual night for us as well, so thank you for allowing us the time to speak to all of you. I'm Deb Bart. I am the Executive Director of Elder Help. We've been helping seniors remain independent and live with dignity in their homes for nearly 50 years. We do that through a stable of services, including care coordination, housing services, transportation, home safety maintenance, and food services, just to name a few. Ninety-six percent of our clients have low to moderate incomes, making it difficult to pay for basic needs like housing, food, and medical insurance. Elder Help makes sure that seniors have access to social support, food, transportation, medical and social activities, and are connected to resources and benefits. We're proud of our almost 20-year partnership with the city of Santee since 2004. Our request is to serve approximately 56 Santee residents plus the Oscar.
Okay, I'm gonna mute her, because she seems to be talking on the other issue. She seems to be talking about, she seems to be talking about the, an elder home. I think that's what they were just showing. So we'll check in with the next speaker and see if that is. I also wanted to say, and I think perhaps there are some women here in the chat, there is a livestream event. It's gonna be hosted by WLRN. It's coming up on the 12th. That's in Florida. I don't know if I have any women who will be there in Florida in the chat right now. But I think that will be a good one to tune into. I really appreciate, you know, everyone who is holding these livestream events. I don't know if everyone got a chance to see our sisters and friends in Scotland. It was an amazing turnout. The Glasgow event was just incredible. There were so many people who showed up. It was incredible to see. Oh, yeah, Shelby, you're there. You will be there. So Shelby will be there. I don't know if everyone remembers. I hosted Shelby when she did her very first, her very first Let Women Speak event, which was a great success. We had a great time. She did a great job. It was her and another lady, and that's all it takes. You know, that's really all it takes. It just, it just takes, you know, one woman, two women, standing up. Christina Goki did the same thing. There was her and Yolanda. I saw some other women standing by, but they were the only ones who spoke. It was still a great event. That's all it takes. I just, I want to remind people that it doesn't, it doesn't take, even though the Glasgow event was amazing, and it looked like there were thousands of people, it doesn't take thousands. All it takes is one.
Mayor Minto?
The whole lectern goes down, too. There's a button on the side there. There's a button that'll take it all down for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dutton. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Minto. And City Council members, I'm Tanya Hendricks, President of Santee-Santas Foundation. This year, Santee-Santas is respectfully requesting a $5,000 share of the CDBG, well, the grant. As the City Council has supported our community service efforts for many years, so we've supported the Santee community. We ensure Christmas spirit by providing food, books, toys, and good cheer to families and individuals during the holiday season.
Okay, I'm gonna mute her as well, because she's talking about Santas, which is great for her, but not necessarily our purview. We can continue our chat while we are waiting. Okay, next few speakers will be petitioning for block grants. So I think I get to pronounce that Fook because of the umlauts over the U. But Fookyo mama, Fookyo sister, Fookyo grandma. I haven't been putting you on screen, because I'm worried that they will censor that if I put your comments up. I don't know what YouTube does for written things. I don't know if they censor only for my language or if they censor other things. But thank you for telling me that. I don't know if you are there in person. But they are, so the next few speakers are petitioning for block grants. So then we'll go back to the main speakers. Oh, what movie is it from? Anywho, thank you for the comment earlier from Turf Court Mail. I am the CBS of Turfland. It's true. It's true, because I think that reporting and recording on these events is important. The thing about, the thing, here's the thing that I think is gonna happen. Unfortunately, we know that no one reports on what we do. And ultimately, what we are doing by covering all these events is, as I always say, creating a record of our dissent. So ultimately, when we look back in history and people say, you know, "Where were the women? Where were the people standing up? Where were they?" Hey, well, guess what? We have created our own records, you know? And CNN isn't gonna air it. MSNBC isn't gonna air it. You know, BBC One isn't gonna air it. I don't, I don't know what your main station is called in Canada, but they're not airing it. Only right-wing stations are airing it. But this is what we are doing with our own YouTube channels, is we are creating our own records. We are creating our own news. We are creating our own raising of our voices. So you know, this is what we're doing. And Daily Wire, I mean, I know there's a lot of people on Daily Wire who are critical of this ideology, but they're not doing things like this. They are not going to women's rallies. They are not going to city council meetings. They are not reporting from state legislatures. And if this next person is speaking on the block grant, I'm gonna put up my state legislature testimony. So let's see what he's saying.
Of course, my name is Dennis Martins, and I come before you this evening on behalf of the Santee Food Bank.
Okay, so he is reporting from the food bank. So I am. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put up my state testimony, because I think it was good. And I'm gonna try and find Ollie London's for us, because I think he did a great job. And I'll try and find Erin Brewer's for us as well. But let me, let me go and get that. Okay, let's see here. I have to go to my YouTube. Because it's gonna be about the same amount that he is speaking, because in the state, in the state event, they only gave us one minute and 30 seconds. So if you think giving them two minutes is not very much, they only gave us one minute and 30 seconds. So I'm gonna, let's see. Okay, so here we go. I'm gonna flip. Where am I here? Okay, I'm gonna take him out. Okay, remove that. Present. Oops. No. Okay. Okay. So if you guys didn't catch this, this is, this was my testimony. I'm gonna make this bigger. This was my testimony at the Washington State Senate. This was on Monday.
My name is Amy Souza, and I oppose Bill 5599. I hold a master's degree in psychology, and myself and many other mental health experts disagree with current recommendations being given right now to sex stereotype non-conforming kids that bypass parental inclusion in care. I oppose this bill on the basis that parents have a right to know where their children are, the right to determine what medical procedures are right for their child, and because children cannot consent to irreversible medical interventions, nor should kids be placed in situations where they're being housed in quarters with the opposite sex without parental consent. Sex-based safeguarding, including sex-based housing, remains relevant in keeping kids safe from sex-based crimes. I also cite to you today Sage's Law, or the Child Protection Act, being introduced in Virginia in honor of a teen whose location was concealed from her parents because of her stated identity, which set in motion a series of events that led to her being sex-trafficked twice. Sage's Law addresses clear points of failure that led to her ordeal when institutions designated to protect her by not notifying parents of her location, further endangering her and leaving her in vulnerable situations instead. Parents know and understand a child's mental health, history, comorbidities, and have a right to know about their child's location. Thank you for voting no on this bill.
Thanks so much for being here today.
So that was my testimony on that bill. That, I basically, as I said, for those of you who were here earlier, that was a bill in Washington State that was being put forward that would, where there were runaway kids in shelters, it would allow those shelters to withhold the location of the child from the parents, as well as to withhold the medical history, or sorry, the medical procedures that the child was having. It would allow them to withhold that information. So it would give kids a way to access gender-affirming care without any parental consent, and it would also potentially house them in mixed-sex facilities. So this is what is happening in Virginia. They are passing a child protective act called Sage's Law because of exactly that. A girl's location was withheld from her parents, and she was ultimately sex-trafficked twice because of that. So it was, I really hope that similar bills, and I hope they take that into account as really why these safeguarding rules have existed in the first place and why it is not, it doesn't benefit anyone to go against them. All right, so let's check back in with our Santee City Council. We'll see where they are at. Okay, we're gonna check back in with them. Yeah, Erin Brewer was there. She did a great job. And Ollie London, who is the influencer, was there. He also did a great job.
Both Estella and George and their staff do a phenomenal amount of work on behalf of our citizens that go unnoticed and unheard of. I'm here as an advocate for our housing and for our community.
Okay, so he's on the housing docket, so they're still on that stuff. Yeah. Yeah, I know. Everything that we know about- Like, these, the, the, everything that we know about safeguarding, uh, is that, you know, in the vast majority of, uh, circumstances, parents are the absolute best, um, uh, caretakers that a child can have.
Please, good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Um, it's an honor to be here in front of you again. Um, thank you, first of all, and foremost, for all the support you've given our agency. Our for-housing agency has been, um, in existence since 1990.
Okay, so she is also gonna talk on housing. Uh, this is a little aside. This is a little aside, and it's a, um, it's a comment about how to give testimony. Um, so if you are ever giving testimony, uh, here, here are some things to remember. Of course, you wanna have your talking points written down. I, what I always do, because I'm not always sure how much time they'll give, I usually have, um, roughly a three-minute speech. Maybe I have a little, a little bit over that, just in case they do give you more time. But I have a three-minute speech. I, I have it where I can cut it and make it a two-minute speech. Um, and I have, I, where I can cut it and make it a 90-second speech, so I can adapt my speech on the fly, depending on how much time they give you. Also, do not waste time thanking the honorable members of the Senate Committee or the Council or whatever it is. Don't waste your time thanking anyone. Get right to the point. Uh, do, now, here are things to include. If you are coming from a background of expertise, do include that. Um, and also, if you are coming, especially if you are speaking on this issue, I didn't happen to mention it this time, but sometimes I do mention it. Um, I will mention that I am a lifelong Democrat, although I haven't voted in a while. But, um, uh, because I, I don't like what they're doing. But, um, but it is important to mention sometimes that I'm a Democrat because they hear it differently if they think you are a conservative. Now, if I have any conservatives, uh, watching right now, I, I mean, I, I don't respect hardly anything in, in politics in general on either side. So I, I have just as much respect for conservatives as I do for Democrats, um, which is to say, I, I don't really respect political parties much. But I, I respect you. I respect everyone who has, um, a political position. Uh, so if you're coming, though, from a Democratic position, this is a good thing to mention, uh, because, again, it disrupts the narrative. So anything that we can do to disrupt the narrative that they are trying to tell about us, this is a useful thing to mention. Okay, we're gonna put him on screen. See if he's also talking about.
... in Santee and for domestic violence services. We use the money that we, the funds that we give.
Okay, so he's also still talking about funding. Okay. Well, I thank you all for, um, keeping in track. I'm, I'm gonna keep, um, I'll keep this live stream going until all of the people who are speaking to the YMCA issue, uh, get through here. Um, so, uh, anyone who wants to keep hanging out to see that, um, I'm just gonna fill space until, uh, they get to that. So, um, uh, I, I hope that, I hope that this, this can still be an engaging conversation, um, as we get there. But I also wanna say, um, so maybe I'll queue up the Ollie London. Um, let me queue up his testimony because I think it's, it's interesting and it's worth seeing. But, uh, I wanna make the point that to testify in most places, now, uh, at my city council, you do not have to be from my town to testify. Uh, for, I would be testifying at Santee City Council if they allowed it. They do not allow remote testimony. So different, um, cities and different states have different things. Most state testimony, if you live in the United States, you do not have to be a resident of that state to provide testimony. So, uh, Ollie London lives in the UK. He gave testimony about that bill. Uh, he's a known kind of influencer. He was trans Korean, if you guys remember that, um, and said he was a woman, and now he has desisted from, from all of that. But, uh, I have testified in Texas. Um, I have testified, um, uh, 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 well, where else have I testified? I've testified in Texas. I've testified in different cities in Texas is the most place that I've testified because they have the most, uh, legislation that's gone up that I've been aware of because I have people apprising me of it. Uh, but you, this is to say that you can testify anywhere and you can testify remotely. So even though I live in Washington State, um, it is a, a three-hour drive to Olympia, which, which would have been a whole day, uh, you know, would have been a, what? Like, a, a whole eight hours if I had tried to drive there, give testimony, uh, and come back. So I chose to testify remotely. Yeah, Erin Brewer testified, and I will queue that up, actually. Let me check in with them for a second.
... for children continues to support the cost throughout the duration of the time they're matched with a child's case.
Okay, so she's, yeah, I'm gonna queue up Erin's testimony. Let me see if I can find it. And I apologize because I think her testimony, let's see. Let me see if I can find it pretty easily.
Make a steaming cup of Prince of Peace ginger honey crystals with lemon. Our na-
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Channel is.
Ah.
Andrew's.
Talk amongst yourselves while I find this. Let me see, hold on. I'm gonna bring it on screen so I, you can see what I'm scrolling through. Uh, hold on. Oops, remove, nope, remove that. Stop screen. Present, share screen. Share screen. Window. Okay, so this is a little weird to look at because, um, I was, I was recording this on the backend. Um, so I should go through and find this footage on the frontend, but I'll, I'll, I'll blow her up when I find it. Um, okay, let me see here. Okay, let's see. Uh, to make this small. Uh, wait, where did that go? Oh, it closed for some reason. Weird. Hold on, there it is. Okay. Okay, Erin was before me, so let me see. Uh, well, this is Ollie, so let me, I have it queued up to him. So let me, let me just see. Okay, wait, what's this dad saying?
... a noble cause. Let's look at what happened the last couple of years. Through COVID, how many-
Okay, so he's still talking about something else. Okay, so I'm gonna play this. This is, this is Ollie's footage. Okay.
Ollie London, I'm an activist, a detransitioner, and social media influencer, and I am testifying con. I believe it is so important to protect vulnerable teens as a society. We all have a moral duty. However, the protected healthcare with compelling reason clause is going to put already vulnerable children at risk. Many teens in the foster and shelter system are already vulnerable with regard to their health, whether they have autism, bipolar, or other mental health struggles. And diagnosing these kids with gender dysphoria, putting them into gender-affirming care is not a solution to a much greater problem. I believe this bill is going to loosen the restrictions, make it much more easy for these kids, uh, with no parental consent to undergo hormone therapy, puberty blockers, gender-affirming care, which can have long-term health consequences, both physically and mentally. I don't believe this is the right solution for teens. If an adult wants to consent to doing a procedure, that's on them. But children cannot consent to gender-affirming care, so I please urge you all to vote no. Thank you. To a much greater problem.
Okay.
I believe this bill is-
Okay, so that was his testimony. I, I think Erin was after him. Let's see, Erin. Maybe Erin was, no, Erin must have been bef- for, maybe Erin was before me. Okay, sorry, friends. This is hard to find a little bit. Oh, here's Dawn Land. Let's see, let's look at, let's watch Dawn speak. So they, oop. Okay, let's listen to Dawn speak.
It's awesome. Do you have an order you wanna go in, Dawn? You wanna start?
Uh.
Or you wanna start?
Uh, we'll, we'll start at the other end.
All right.
Uh, good morning. Hello there, my name is Justine Crer. I'm bisexual in a same-sex marriage. I voted for Democrats my entire life. I'm part of a medical watchdog organization called Gender Health Query regarding pediatric medical transition that is run by gay, lesbian, and bisexual people. But I am speaking as an individual today for myself. We are seeing an increasing amount of damage from pediatric medical transition, particularly to gay, lesbian, and bisexual youth. Transition regret seems to be increasing. I would like to raise alarm bells about pediatric transition gen- The gender-affirming care you're referring to in your bill, we now know causes osteopenia. It causes stunted genitalia and permanent lack of sexual function. It causes sterility, and it likely impacts cognitive development because puberty is the most important developmental period in a person's life. Another reason this is a, uh, red flag, this bill. In LGBTQ plus-plus spaces online and sometimes in real life, we know that there are examples of grooming and inappropriate behavior regarding minors. It is well-known that there's a lot of sex work in gender scenes. And I can tell you, there's not- in some of these environments regarding youth. And you're removing reporting processes and vetting processes in your plans to place youth in homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Alice Kristowski. I'm a married gay woman with three children. I speak to you today as a concerned parent, as a Washington citizen, and as the Washington State Chapter lead for Gays Against Rumors. As an organization, we are deeply concerned by the repeated attempts by the legislative body to medicalize children and limit or remove parental involvement in the medical treatment and social lives of their children. This bill gives an unprecedented agency to vulnerable children that we grant in no other circumstances. And lies. Children are not allowed to smoke or drink. They are not allowed to get tattoos. But we are supposed to greenlight children asking for puberty blockers, hormone treatment, or body mutilating surgery. No gender-affirming care is inherently safe. It is not reversible, and it transforms children into lifelong medical patients. This is not something that children can consent to. Only adults can consent to these types of procedures. SB 5599 does not provide any information for how long children may remain away from their parents or legal guardians. Does not make clear the safeguarding process of excessive state intervention. And it appears to prioritize the fast-tracking of any and all gender-affirming care practices over returning the child to their parents. Gender-affirming care to minors should be considered child abuse. Care providers should not be protected. I hope this bill will not make it out of committee. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, Dawn.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Dawn Land, and I am asking you to vote no on Senate Bill 5599. The reality is, humans will never be able to change the sex with which they are born. But that isn't even the most important point as to why this is a bad bill. Children cannot consent to the mutilation, the poisoning, and the irreparable harm caused by trying to change the sex with which we were born. Children with gender dysphoria often have-
Okay, sorry, we're, we gotta go back. Sorry, friends. Okay, hold on.
Melissa, I'm a cat. Saying that a man who identifies as a woman should not be in the woman's bathroom is not coming from a place of hatred. I condemn those accusations. Rather, those accusations are disingenuous, filled with hate, and frankly harms the public, public good by spreading dangerous misinformation. As no one is saying that transgender people are harmful, that is another lie based in hate and deception. So here's the deal. As a soc- as a society, we have two options. We remain grounded in truth, logic, and reality, or we bend reality in an effort to affirm feelings, pursue inclusivity, and equity. If we do that, we will undoubtedly allow actual predators to prey on the vulnerable, or even worse, allow pedophilia to demand acceptance in our society. Because after all, if a man can identify as a woman based off feelings, why can't a man also identify as a child based off feelings? If gender can be a social construct, why can't age also be a social construct?
Right, yeah, why?
I can only hope none of this happens here in Santee before the council decides to be brave and take a stance to preserve reality. The reality that men are men and women are women. Again, we either live in truth, logic, and reality, or we do not. In closing, I am calling upon the Santee City Council to encourage the Cameron YMCA to reverse its stance on their position, which allows men who refer to themselves as transgender to enter a woman's locker room. And if the YMCA does not, as unfortunate as this is, I am calling upon the council to terminate the lease with the Cameron YMCA as keeping society grounded in reality, truth, and logic is more important than any service a YMCA can offer to any community. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Tracy.
My name is Tracy Till, and I am a longtime Santee resident. Four weeks ago, I stood in my kitchen making dinner for my kids while I watched a brave young lady address you, our Santee City Council. I immediately shared her address as far and wide as I could. It made international news. Tonight, the eyes of the nation are upon us. For the sake of the innocence of children and the dignity and modesty of women, my red line has been drawn. I am asking that our council put forth a motion to discuss and review on the next agenda, ending our lease to the Cameron Family YMCA. Other wonderful options could be Santee Parks and Rec facility, or it could be taken over by one of the many new schools in, in East County that desperately need the space. With that said, please take this dollar as a deposit, and the Till Family Trust will be happy to take the lease over. You can even add a few zeros to the end of it.
Next speaker I have is Melissa O'Connor. Melissa O'Connor.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Melissa, and I come to you not speaking out of fear, but with certainty and resolve. What is a woman? I am a woman. The first time I breast, the first time I breastfed my first child, I placed my baby on my chest, and he quickly crawled to my nipple. Even after being born premature at 34 weeks gestation, innately and with intention, he was able to find his source of life. Me. My baby knew that I was a woman. The root cause of why we are gathered here tonight is that we have allowed a small group of bullies to change our language, silence our dissent, and create policies based off a greater-than, less-than model. We are facing a society that is arguing that a grown man is more vulnerable than our children. Is there any other time in history where this has been the case? The Young Men's Christian Association needs to simply be called the Y. W-H-Y. Why have you abandoned your Christian values? Why are you a place of refuge for only one part of the population but not others? Why do you have a revenue of 6.2 billion a year globally with more than 64 million beneficiaries in 120 countries, but you are only, but you're a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit? Why as a nonprofit are you beholden to California policy trends and not the beliefs of, beliefs of your founders or the large number of your members? We've gathered here tonight from all over San Diego County to ask you, the City Council of Santee, to cancel your dollar-a-year lease with a Y until they change their policy. To the small trans army, I'm not afraid of you. We are not going to surrender our identity nor our right-
The next speaker I have is Rachel Ashley.
Thank you for your time. Um, I don't have anything prepared. I just kinda go off it, so we'll see how this goes. Um, I am here for support for you to put on the agenda next week to discuss the YMCA lease. Now, there's something about transgenders. Obviously, there's no vetting process about what a transgender is. So basically, there's a couple of things. Any heterosexual man who is a sexual predator can just come forth, and usually those people have nothing to lose. I'm sorry. Everything to lose and nothing to gain. Now, I know that most of us are parents, and when our little kids were babies, we would do anything to fiercely protect our children. And it doesn't matter whether they are an infant, a toddler, or they are 23 years old. We will always protect our kids. And that doesn't make us bigots. Because what's happening is there is this immense pressure for politicians, for council members, for board supervisors to cave in- to cave in to this ideology of, you know, what the YMCA says about everyone's welcome at the YMCA. But if we're putting the safety of women, children, and minors, and we're sacrificing that, then equity, inclusion, and diversity is nothing but woke rhetoric. And that's what's happening today, is you will be called bigots, I will be called a bigot. Everyone here who is in support for women and children's safety will be called a bigot because we are not giving in to the culture. And just because it has, the world is ever-changing, does not mean it has to. We can still keep our feet grounded and have that foundation of what we are here to be called for, and that is to protect our children at all costs. And that doesn't mean that we are discriminating against anybody, it means that we need to stand for truth and stand for always protecting our children. So, thank you.
Next speaker I have is Shari, or Shari.
Good evening, my name is Shari. I am the founder of a local nonprofit that recovers missing and exploited individuals. While the majority of our recoveries have been children, we have recovered adults as well. Our organization will assist anyone who requests assistance, no matter what, no matter when. Over the last 20 months, we've recovered 26 survivors and assisted law enforcement and recovering many others. More often than not, these individuals had been or were actively being sexually assaulted and/or exploited. More than 50% of these recoveries were from this community specifically. We do not discriminate. Our personal beliefs do not interfere with our mission to recover any one individual. Missing is missing. What is occurring at the YMCA is not about equality and inclusiveness, this is a safety issue. Perhaps the one individual that sparked all of this is not a registered sex offender, but this policy creates an opportunity for predators to have access to our most vulnerable. What I had not heard until tonight was anybody addressing the concern for predators utilizing this inclusiveness law as a tool to gain access to their victims. This is occurring. Registered sex offenders are taking advantage of this inclusiveness law and using it as an avenue to find their next victim-
Yep.
-in other arenas.
Yep.
What is the YMCA doing to ensure that this is not occurring at their facility? As far as my research has uncovered, they're doing nothing. If the city of Santee refuses to stand up for women and children by refusing to terminate this lease with the YMCA until such time that they take drastic measures to ensure the safety of all women and children, you are complicit, and you are a part of the problem.
Yep.
You are contributing to the potential sex abuse and/or sexual exploitation of women and children. I stand here tonight urging you to place this on the next meeting's agenda and to please take all of this information into consideration, or at the very least insist on change in the YMCA policies before agreeing to continue to extend their lease. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker I have is Greg Denham.
So they thought, they, this is about urging the city to drop the lease? Now, some, the city said something earlier-
Honored to be with all of you, and thank you for your service to this great city and stepping up and leading. Listen, I just want to maybe bring a little different perspective. I pastor a church, Rise Church, I'm also the host of World News Briefing on his channel, and needless to say, we live in a unique time. COVID has been an accelerator, it's revealed the fault lines in our culture, it has revealed the fractures in our culture, and it's also revealed that there's certainly a darkness behind the darkness, but this is nothing new. I mean, when Jesus looked upon the multitudes, he was moved with compassion, and he saw them as sheep without a shepherd. That speaks of vulnerability, they needed proper boundaries, and of course, he came to be the solution. And we live in a broken world, and he gave himself on the cross, and we believe that the solution is that we need to be born again. If one doesn't embrace that, a love still needs to lead, and that's what I just want to end with, because love protects and love nourishes. That's what the Bible says. And we are called to love God, we're called to love each other. When we stand to protect children, we stand to protect women, we are loving them, we're always doing the right thing, and when we don't do that, we're not loving them, it really is a form of evil. So I just, I'm praying for you, and I thank you guys for your leadership. I think we're at really a Churchill or Chamberlain moment, to be frank with you, which is, we're either gonna like face reality, call it for what it is, do the right thing, or we're gonna, we're gonna be like a Chamberlain and attempt to negotiate with influences that we're gonna be unable to control and are gonna morph to impact us in a diverse-
Next speaker I have is Jason Neese. Jason?
I was just gonna say, it is loving to hold firm boundaries for women and kids and girls.
My name is Jason Neese, I'm a resident here in San Diego County, I'm a husband, father of six, I'm a marriage and family therapist, an ordained pastor, and I work for the largest farm company that distributes organic produce in this great state. I'm here in reference of a man showering in a woman's locker room at the Santee YMCA.
Yep, men are men.
We've been told to shut up, we've been told to just go along with what our government says, to just sit on the couch and bitch about being a victim. I'm tired of this nonsense, I'm here today because our entire culture is dominated by weak, neutered, castrated, effeminate, passive, weak, woke, and worthless inactive men. Some of you, some of you, I'm speaking directly to, some of you are in front of me, some of you are behind me. I will not be passive about this subject. Passive men are part of the problem. Passive men watch evil men rule. Passive men watch wrong men make decisions. We are not here to be passive. I am not passive in my marriage, we cannot be passive with our children. Once your daughters turn 13, once my daughter turns 13, I certainly as hell can't be passive. Then, I'm begging you to not be passive on this subject, to call out this transgender selfishness. Transgender, shoot, it's not even a thing. We live in a culture that is selfish, there is male and female, period. You are either born a girl or a boy, accepted, that's just the way it is. This is not controversial, this is common sense. Let males and females, they need to be in their own damn locker rooms. There are closed-handed issues that we must agree on, and there are open-handed issues that we can debate and work through. This question that we are asking right now, this is not an open-handed issue, this-
The next speaker I have is Jeff Way. The next speaker, Jeff?
My name is Jeff. For the past three years, it's become blatantly obvious that the reason we're in the world, the worldwide hurt we're in is because nobody's been stepping up and speaking out. Everybody's been on the couch watching bread and circus, Roman Coliseum football games, and predictive programming, Hollywood movies, while tyranny and insanity creeps in by design. What so many haven't yet tied together is that all of what's going on is very much tied together. The population is/has been under attack by the cabal of eugenicists that have run this planet for a long time. They purposely poison us from every imaginable angle. Fluoride in the water, glyphosate in our food, chemtrails from the sky, EMF radiation, and vaccines in the bloodstream. These eugenicists want to take us from 8 billion on the planet to 500 million. And the CEO of Pfizer recently came out and said that, with the rollout of this depopulating vaccine, he thinks we might just hit the mark. Great, right? Well, another angle of their attack is to specifically target our children in every way possible. Hell, we have people dropping like flies now from the shot, and yet they're still pushing it on our kids. They indoctrinate our kids in school and confuse them whenever possible. They don't want creative, booming youngsters, they want more obedient cogs in the wheel.
Yep.
We have to protect our kids like never before. I couldn't care less what consenting grown adults want to sleep with whom. People's sexuality is their sexuality. The problem is that the policy in question at the Y opens the door to more problems for our kids. I'm not talking about the person in this incident, let's face it. We all know, unfortunately, there are a lot of creeps out there. There are a lot of them. And letting men in the locker room with little girls just opens up a whole new hunting ground.
The next speaker I have is Sean Fredrickson. If you can please pay attention to the time, it's right in front of you.
If you can please pay attention, but everyone prepared three-minute speeches.
Wow, here we are, trying to figure out what a woman is. It's such a strange time to be alive. So on social media, if you haven't seen today, there is a video kind of going viral. There is this alleged woman that is masturbating in a women's bathroom. So let me clarify, sorry. This woman has a penis, and she is stroking it in a woman's bathroom? And there's a woman here, if you haven't seen it, guys, it's on Twitter, there's a woman here washing her hands. So if you can make sense of this for me, would you be okay with this?
Nope, nope, nope.
Would you be okay with a man dressed as a woman masturbating in the mirror, in a bathroom, in a women's bathroom, and call that man a woman? Because this is where we are right now. We, as people, are starting to recognize you are falling for a ploy within political correctness, and we are urging you to stand for truth, because if you don't, my children, our children, are subject to your failure. I have an eight-year-old. If this woman was my eight-year-old, if by chance, my eight-year-old went into this restroom while I was patiently waiting outside for her, and there's a grown man stroking his penis around my daughter, what do you think I should do as a father whose duty is protecting my children? You're not doing it. Are you doing it, Sheriff? Because you are obligated to detain a man when he goes into a woman's bathroom, are you not? You know what to do. There's no question about it. You need to establish an ordinance to prevent this from happening in this city. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Dan Moyer.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Moyer. I just wanted to speak about the YMCA, as they claim that they are fighting in the name of love and inclusiveness to allow these men pretending to be women into these women's bathrooms and locker rooms. However, this is not inclusive, and it's also dangerous for both men and women. It actually presents opportunities for men to commit crimes and to do wrong in sexual nature, which will therefore end up destroying themselves. They can't, you know, they could end up in jail, they can tarnish their soul, or they can end up in hell if they don't repent of that. It also makes women feel unsafe, and not wanting to use these facilities, they're gonna, or worse, traumatized for life. It excludes them, so therefore, it's given these actions, it's not safe nor inclusive for either of them, for men nor women, for this to go on. So please terminate the, please terminate the lease with the YMCA. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Stan Baker.
Hi, council, thank you for this time. There's something that I think we fail to address. We see with the YMCA and the transgender in the women's bathroom, a lot of the obvious potential risks of some sort of sexual predator situation happening. One thing that I would like to point out is, I'm really concerned with young children being exposed to inappropriate sexual content at an early age. There's something that I don't want my kids to see, is a man's penis, if they're a daughter, in a public area, that's something that is, even if nothing actually happens, that's kind of traumatic.
That's already, that's already abuse.
Any parents would want to put their children in. So I'd like to point out that we have to consider, you know, more beyond this physical safety issues, that there's sort of some mental and emotional issues that are at play as well. And I think that's something that I haven't really heard too much talked about, although we've heard some excellent testimony from people up here today so far. So I'd like to thank you guys for your time, I'd like to thank you that you put into consideration every possible measure that you have to sort of combat this issue that we're facing right now. It's not something that's going away, thank you for your courage, that you're gonna take to take a right stand, to point to where people have to stand on one side or another, and there's, I think, a clear side that you should stand on as proud Americans. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Ronald Starzinski.
Can you say your name so we have it correct?
My name is Ron Starzinski, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable mayor, council, I see many names, I voted for many of you, and so it's good to see that you're here. Seriously, I'm here to amplify and repeat, hopefully underscore some of the points that were already made about this YMCA exposure issue. There is, many of us agree on the same points. There's an absolute need here for respect, respect for privacy. Whether we concede that we can have some kind of categorical solution that's going to eliminate one side, or the evil of one side, or the evil of one practice, that will never happen. So what I want, what I want the council to consider is a proposal for conditions for any kind of YMCA lease renewal. And that is a way to plan logically the configuration of YMCA's. I'm also a member of the YMCA a long time, and I attend YMCA at a number of locations. There are ways to configure the facilities to guarantee, or at least assure mostly, the privacy of members, the sightlines, the access, the modulating sightlines. And then, secondly and importantly, the condition should have some kind of enforcement aspect where there's a way to monitor and manage this import.
Next speaker I have is Dan Bigford.
Come on, Dan.
Okay, start my timer. There we go.
Start speaking.
So I've got two minutes to piss the entire room off, because no, I think it's short-sighted to not to renew the lease for the YMCA, because they do, they do have a, they are a valuable resource for the very people that we're trying to protect here tonight. And so, without the YMCA, I can tell you now, and I'm sure that Nick over here can also tell you, we don't have the money to budget, in the budget that to keep the YMCA building open. We'll lose that resource. So what we have here, though, is a privacy and security issue. And that's what we need to focus on. How are we going to get past this? How are we going to protect our women and children, as well as protect their privacy, protect their security, and still maintain this crazy law, the crazy laws that Sacramento throws at us? So that's a real challenge, and I thank you all for your time and your attention, and for listening to everybody here, but I think that if anything, maybe only do, renew the lease for a year to see what happens with the Y. I think that they will go ahead and make the changes necessary, but that's for Marlene and her staff to make those negotiations. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Amy Strellick.
Hi, my name is Amy. I've never done anything like this before, I'm an at-home mom. I'm a resident, 51 years. I'm a daughter and a sister, and a wife and a mother, and a grandmother of three precious innocent grandchildren. innocent grandchildren, and that's my why.
Stacy, go ahead and take a deep breath. We want to hear what you have to say.
I felt safe growing up in East County. I rode my pony. I rode the bus to Parkway Plaza, which I wouldn't send my children to now. I played kick the can in the street until nine o'clock at night in the summer. I drove here today, it was dark, I did not see one child out in the street playing and feeling safe. These are things I just don't see children doing anymore. But as things around here have gotten bigger, I'm sorry, and scarier, the YMCA is, are you, as this gentleman said, it's, it's a huge organization that has been here for a community, and for children, and women, and families to feel safe. And for the first time in my lifetime, they're not safe. We allowed a grown man with a penis in a lo- in a child, in a locker room with a naked child. How unsafe is that? And as community leaders, I'm coming to you to say, if they don't change their policy as they've seemed to stand behind it, then you're at a crossroads that you can't renew their lease. Because as a society, and as a member of society, if we don't protect our children, and our women, and our elderly, are we a society at all? Like, it shouldn't matter if you are transgender, if you're gay, if you're not, that, I'm standing here as a Christian, and I don't care. But I care that every child, even if they have a child, felt like a gay cat.
Next speaker I have is Samuel DeRuth.
Good evening, you guys. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council members. My name is Pastor Samuel, I'm one of the pastors at Awaken Church, and have campuses around the community, six locations, and just on behalf of our pastors, Pastor Ian Leanne, they love you guys, honored. I actually texted him, I said I had to change my speech because I'm not used to addressing a council that I can tell is already on our team, is already fighting for the people, is already on the side of truth. And I just, maybe what I could just encourage, uh, along with everyone else echoing that we stand for truth and to protect our women and children, to not even consider extending that type of lease to an organization that has rejected common sense, rejected truth, and embracing things that are potentially massively harmful to our women and children. I come as a pastor, but also as a father. I have two beautiful young girls, and I cannot imagine the insanity of allowing an adult male, who, whatever you want to identify as, I don't care if you identify as a purple dinosaur, if you're a male, you're not coming into the female's bathroom, no matter what the scenario is. This is insanity. This is really, um, this is an emperor's new clothes kind of moment, right? Where everyone has been coerced into saying, you know what, this man is a female, and everyone's just going, well, I guess out of pressure, we gotta agree with that. And it, it's, it's time for us, and I can see you guys have truth on, on your side, and I thank you for that. I just want to continue to encourage you, step up in courage, do what's right, challenge the narrative, be honest about it. If the emperor doesn't have clothes, say he doesn't have clothes, right? And let's stand up for truth, and let's continue to maintain a city that people want to live in for decades to come. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lou Yurdell. Lou?
Hello, my name is Lou Yurdell. This whole YMCA thing isn't just a war on women and womanhood, it's a war on men, and frankly, all people who live in a truthful reality. Christian love has no fellowship with evil, and a man showering in the women's locker room is evil. Christian love also says to expose what is evil and contend for what is good, and that's what we're doing. Do you want to be on this right side of history or the wrong side? It comes down to that. You may ask why I'm bringing up Christian love. Well, that C in YMCA stands for Christian. Frankly, with how the YMCA is acting, they need to take the C out of their name. But then it would be the Young Men's Association. That'd be even more confusing for the woke, because they seem to have a particularly difficult time defining what a man and a woman is. This is a full-out assault on women. Men are trying to change what women are. Think about it. The first female rear admiral in the Navy was Richard Levine, a man. Bruce Jenner won Woman of the Year, that's a dude. Things that women have fought so hard for are now just being given over to men, including their locker rooms. I will not let this be the legacy for my daughter. And in case you didn't hear, the YMCA in Ohio, a trans woman was finally and recently arrested for indecent exposure of his penis to minor girls in a locker room. This violated the penal code, no pun intended. Even though the YMCA told the parents that the man they saw was indeed a woman, and they had nothing to worry about. I mean, if Ray Charles was still alive, he could have seen this coming. Why can't Santee? So yes, since the Santee YMCA won't act accordingly with the protection of minors and females, I am imploring the Santee City Council to stand in the gap and make the only decision that you should do, and not renew the one-year lease on the YMCA, protect our children, and do the right thing.
The next speaker I have is Rich Trinkinsky.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service. Thanks for letting us to come up here and talk. I just wanted to talk about truth. A lot of people have talked about that. We hear his truth, her truth, their truth, there's all kinds of truths out there, right? But we know that if I, everybody in here would not want me to walk up here naked.
No.
Would you guys want me to walk up here naked?
I do not.
Okay, have I made my point? I mean, come on, Lou's got it right, it's just insanity, right? So, look, I'm not here to judge anybody, because all of us are doomed without Jesus Christ. So, you know, God-given conscious, yeah, that's great, but we need salvation, and Jesus will transfer and transform our minds, okay, and renew our minds. So, I, guys, I just wanted to, they call me the master of the obvious sometimes. The, the, here it is. How do we accept the truth? We gotta be humble. Number one, ask God to give you and receive, a receiving heart, to receive the truth, right? Sounds like Samuel's got it right, I think you guys have that already. And then understand the proper order of a hierarchy in our, in our country. It's God, we, the people. The government is under that. So you guys are under us, all of us. You guys are under it. So thank you for your service. God bless you.
The next speaker is Isabella Clifford.
You know, I, actually, honestly, the pastors are meant to be leaders in their community, and they're stepping up like leaders today.
There's a bunch of people standing outside still, you know?
I don't know, I haven't been out there in a while.
If, if anybody in the back could take a look out there, and if anybody's just hanging out there because they don't think there's any seats left in here, could you let them know there are plenty of seats to come in? Hope they're hearing me out here, by the way. Okay, Isabella, thank you very much.
All right. Hello, my name's Isabella, and I'm here with the Party for Socialism and Liberation to show our support for Kristen. I'm an East County resident, and I've lived here and gone to the YMCA almost my whole life. I've noticed a lot of people feeling the need to lie about what actually happened in that YMCA, making Kristen out to be some sort of monster, entering the changing rooms with the sole purpose of exposing herself.
No one is making him out to be a monster, we're just making him out to be a man.
This problem did not start with Rebecca. This is a deep systematic issue that's just ramped up over time. Across the country, transphobic bills are set in place more and more.
Sexist bills. Sexist bills are being put in place, and we're trying to erase that.
With this happening, you might expect that there's been a spike of anti-trans opinions, but that's not true at all. Two-thirds of Americans are against laws that would limit transgender rights, and only 26% of Republicans support bills that would prohibit gender-affirming care. The statistics show that people in America are becoming increasingly tolerant, welcoming, and accepting of our non-cis het identities, while the tyrannical government has been trying to press draconian laws that directly counteracts the will of the people. If more and more people are supporting our community, then why are we seeing so many laws being drafted against us? It's not the people asking for these bills, it's anti-trans lobbying groups, willing to throw money at, willing to throw money around to get what they want. For example, in Montana, the first anti-transgender sports bill passed in 2021 was brought on public.
Pro-women bills are not anti anything.
As long as these groups are willing to pay out, our capitalist government will be willing to comply with their requests. In the end, do you think our government should be listening to people or the money? Because under a capitalist government, the people are never the priority. The only way to fix this problem is to listen to the public, and the public is calling for inclusion. It's important that Santee works towards inclusion and acceptance by starting LGBT, LGBT-centered programs or opening a Santee LGBT center. A lot of people in LGBT community are suicidal and depressed.
Next speaker I have is Mary D.
Yeah, it's ironic that these people call themselves Marxists, because Marx has a material analysis of reality.
Hi, and good evening here. So first of all, I want everybody to realize, this is basically COVID 2.0, the way the government has pitted, uh, they make the, the rules, and then they make the businesses enforce it, very familiar to us. So ICD-10 and 11, uh, it has morphed. There's a reason transsexualism was historically classified as a behavioral psychological disorder, but there was change recently to fall under a term now few have ever heard of, paraphilia, the definition of which is a pattern of recurring sexually arousing mental imagery or behavior that involves unusual and especially socially unacceptable sexual practices. Uh, and what they don't even realize is their own definition actually is a reason why that that they should not be allowed in the bathroom. Uh, tellingly, the disorder of transgenderism still remains in the DSM-V, the Diagnostic Statistical Manual of Mental Illness and Disorders. Both politicians and medical bureaucrats have latched onto this fragile population to order to grift off of them by creating the trans-industrial complex, well on its way to being a multimillion-dollar industry.
It's a 5.2 trillion-dollar industry already.
We are tired of blanket policies that give cover to predators and leave our children vulnerable. Somewhere along the way, tolerance turned to promotion that morphed into compelled acceptance. We do not consent. You have the right to believe the sky is green. What you don't have as a right to do is to force me to validate your delusion. A society can be judged by how it treats its most vulnerable, animals, elders, children, and yes, even women. Stop enacting and enforcing an umbrella policy that gives covers to those who have capitalized to do on our, our kids' harm. Another speaker talked about Churchill versus Chamberlain. I would call it your Pontius Pilate moment. Are you going to wash your hands of this, or rise up and protect our kids? Thank you.
Next speaker is George.
Yeah, hello, Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, yeah, I'm just here to express my disappointment, now, scratch that moral outrage towards a formerly respectable and upright organization, namely the YMCA. They've gone completely rogue, just like a lot of our institutions have. Um, our public schools, universities, higher education, all rogue. YMCA, boom, done, toss it on the scrap heap, I'm done with it. I suggest that the city of Santee terminate their lease and stop partnering with such rogue organizations. They've gone bad. They don't deserve a buck lease every year, or whatever, whatever the terms are, they don't deserve it. And, uh, just terminate that lease and stop partnering with these organizations, the Y who, uh, condones, you know, sexual deviancy and even sexually, sexually predatory of behavior. Uh, no ma- no biological male, male, um, even deserves, or has no right to be in a women's bathroom, women and girls locker room at all. Stop partnering with the YMCA, terminate their lease ASAP right now. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Consuelo.
Uh, Consuelo, I just want to, um, really, I, I usually address the people at the meeting.
Excuse me, you need to address us.
But I'm not talking to you. It's a non-agenda.
You cannot speak, then. You have to address the city council, that's what we're here for tonight. Take your testimony and not too cater to the audience.
Oh, really?
Yes. This is a hearing.
Okay, well, I am, uh, addressing the people in the audience, and I'm sorry, my back is towards you, but, um, yeah, this is awkward. Uh, so what I really wanted to encourage was, um, I, I don't want to say what I feel about the trans and their, their thing, I just want to encourage all of you to attend as many meetings around the county as you can, because this was actually at a Board of Supervisors meeting, the UN, you can identify as whatever, to go into whatever bathroom. Um, so this could have all been avoided, but it's like, people only, uh, react when it's already done. And a lot of, uh, I think a lot of the responsibility is, uh, it's all, it's our fault, it is our fault, because we think these big local organizations, these freedom fighters are gonna, they're gonna fight for us, and when they don't show up at the meetings, well, well, you know, that kind of discourages the people that follow them, too. So I encourage you to stop following and look in the mirror and, and go within and kind of, I mean, it's up to us. So if you don't like what you're seeing, like, do you know that we're gonna have poop water, that we're gonna be drinking and bathing in? Well, I know now, because my brother invited us to a water meeting, so now I'm involved with, oh my God, look what they're doing, look what we're drinking. How did we get here? They fluoridate us, they, they, they poison us, they, they, it's propaganda, it's indoctrination, it's all of it. But we have allowed it, we have forgotten, we've, we've given it to the church, we've given it to the politicians, we've given it to, no, it's you. I don't care what you believe in, it's your responsibility. Believe in yourself. That's all I got.
Next speaker I have is Audra.
Cool hair lady.
It's good to be back. So I use the name Audra, and my pronouns are rock, paper, scissors. But, you know, I just, for being serious, though, um, it's really sad, because what's happening is a perversion of reality. And it's a spiritual battle, what's going on, and they're, they're attacking the kids, but they're coming after all of us. And the problem is, is we're trying to say good is bad, bad is good, up is down, red is black, you know, all of the things that allow us to believe delusions, like drinking sewer water, as Consuelo was saying, is a good thing over fresh water. That's what people believe these days. Just like, you know, I mean, a girl can feel uncomfortable, and she can be told that she is not unsafe. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm a victim for being a child, being a molested child, and my dad didn't think that taking me to my babysitters every day was gonna make me a victim for nine years. So just because you say that you're safe, it doesn't mean that. He probably thought I was safe, probably wouldn't have taken me there if he didn't know at the time. But we're like, blurring the lines so that we can say, you know, this man can go in there, and, and it's not a bad if he doesn't, if, if anybody, I'm like, really? What the fuck? Oh, but it's sad, because being a victim, how do we know that that doesn't trigger other victims? Right? So it's like, if you go in there, and, and I'm a victim, and I'm going, oh my gosh, but you're just, we're saying that people are safe when that's not the case. And, I mean, you know, we're even blurring the lines of like, having these people go to a doctor, like a gynecologist, and the gynecologist is seeing them. I mean, it's, it's like a perversion of what's really going on, and unless we acknowledge this, then we can't see what's really going on, and we're never gonna protect the children. But it's our duty to do that. They come after us, and if we don't protect them, nobody else will. So I urge you to do that, because I-
The next speaker I have is Chovan Rushing.
You know, um, I don't really come here for peace, you know, I really came here with a word for you guys. And what bothers me is just sitting here and looking at you guys. You guys don't seem bothered enough about this, and I don't understand that.
Boom.
Minus the gentleman on the far right, he, he seems to, to, to pay attention here. Now, we have a gentleman on the left by the name of Blake, who's openly gay, he's here to speak against this, so that should let you know that there's an issue here, right? I, I want to identify as a billionaire. If I pull out my phone, my account won't say that. You, sir, John, mayor, director, as your title is, I'm sure you have, you know, you take care of yourself well, you look well-kept, you have a nice suit, I'm sure your home is lovely. If I show up there at 12:00 at night saying I identify as an owner of your home, I'm sure you're gonna look at me like I'm crazy and call the cops. I'm sure you're gonna look at me like I'm crazy and call the cops. The other gentleman that showed the video of the man masturbating, what? This is what happens when you take God out of the mix. You, we can't do this better than God. He, he puts things in order for a reason. I'm, I'm shaking because I have a daughter. I, there's, there's, there is nothing you could tell me if a man was doing something like that where my daughter was, nothing. But I can't just attack people because of something like that, right? Because there's order. That's why we have officers, right? This is a no brainer thing.
Next speaker I have is Anthony Carnaval. Anthony?
I need, I need you be, folks to not talk. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm guessing when you ran for office, you would have never imagined having to deal with a lease to an organization that facilitates nude interaction between minor females and adult biological males. I live in El Cajon now. I grew up on Len Street. My childhood home, I think, is in that picture somewhere. Went to Cajon Park, kindergarten through fifth grade. I never imagined I'd be here speaking about this tonight. Um, many seem to think the laws of this state tie your hands. As I understand it, this city's lease with the YMCA is on terms that are very favorable to the Y. I do not think this council is powerless to protect women and children from nude interaction with adult biological males on city land. I don't imagine an application for a business license in Santee would be approved if the applicant revealed plans to allow new nude interaction between adult males and children. Um, we're now aware of an organization that is doing exactly that on city property. There are options to address this. Um, they're not easy, but it's the right thing to do. Um, you might pick a fight with the state, but the time to make a stand is now. We're not here to make, we're not here to take orders from far off bureaucrats that imperil children in our community. We need to make a stand now. Thank you. Thank you for all you do for this city.
Next speaker is John Hossick.
My name is John Hossick. You know, I don't often get a chance to come to these city council meetings and I used to come to them eagerly. Listen to what I'm hearing in the public. It's terrible. It's terrible. I see a bunch of sound bites. You know, I lived, I, I remember moving to this, this city. And I remember that was one of my concerns was being worried about a crowd in this room. I serve this community. I have served families, children, seniors, you name it. I'm gonna ask for anything. Now I'm gonna let you know something. You as the city council, I feel for you so much. You are our public servants. I know each one of you. And I feel for what you're having to listen to because I know one thing. You guys have always fought for solutions. And for those that are in the room that don't know that, you got another thing coming. Okay, you don't think they're not in the bathroom or, or trying to get on the phone to get this thing solved? You're, you're way over the top. And you think the YMCA is worthless and it's just worth a dollar? Maybe you underestimate the value of our community.
I don't know.
And what it actually provides. Look for the solutions. Don't dramatize the problem. Make the community better without eliminating everything that you might hold dear. You know, have some common sense and have some courtesy for our community. This is really a shame when I have to hear sin in that audience.
Next speaker I have is June McCrevey.
I don't think he knew what he was on about. I don't think he knew.
You can hear me. Um, it's my understanding that John Minto has been collecting information regarding the transgender at, at the Y.
The man, the man.
Forward. And I'm here to tell you what goes on in that locker room. I've been going to the YMCA for the last year. I attend the nine o'clock water class. That means I get out about 10 o'clock. Chrissy is the transgender that is in that class with me.
Man.
It started in the locker room. Chrissy very frequently walks through the locker room without clothes on, which was awkward and weird, and I just kind of kept my distance. Um, fast forward a little bit later, I have been approached by this person.
Man.
Even if they put clothes on the bottom half of them, still doesn't have clothes on the top of them. And she.
He.
Has breasts.
He.
And she's about this big.
He.
So when he comes over to me, I'm like.
He.
Eye level with his chest.
He.
Which is extremely awkward and uncomfortable. And I just didn't quite know how to respond to that. The.
He.
Recently I discovered that Chrissy is transgender, which means that for the last year I have been changing and showering with an XY chromosome man. I am.
You did not know he was a man?
Grandma, this is morally wrong. And as Pastor Gary opened us in prayer this evening, I am asking you to prayerfully consider to do the right thing. That was, if you'd like to speak to me later more privately, I can tell you what goes on there because I'm, I'm someone who is there. Thank you for your time.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know. She didn't know.
Michael?
I, he, I don't know. I don't know.
Uh, my name is Michael Castillo. I'm a, uh, 21 year veteran. I'm a father of three daughters that attend the YMCA or used to attend the YMCA. I have, even more importantly, I'm a man of God. Um, a lot of people made a lot of good points tonight, so I don't want to keep beating a dead horse.
No, keep it.
I had a 45 minute conversation with the GM, the general manager at the YMCA. We've been going there for years. But I asked her, I said, it's like a ticking time bomb. What is your, what is your standard operating procedure? What's your protocol if this happens again? And she's told me we have to assess each individual situation as it comes up. So it's like they're waiting for something to happen. Right now, it closes at nine o'clock and they can stop immediately. So I just ask you to stand in the gap, be bold, take the authority of your elected position and just make the right decision. Thank you.
So the next speaker I have, um, T S U K U R U. I don't know how to say that name. Last name F O R.
So I think that they, just so you, remember how when they were originally watching, we, they were originally showing this, they were showing the person facing forward? I think they changed the view so they didn't have to, um, this guy's sign over here, um, the guy who's holding the sign, I think they changed it so that we don't see his sign anymore, um, on the camera. I think they wanted his sign off of the camera. I think that's why they changed the view.
My name is Noemia Rego.
You get, don't get close to the microphone. Thanks.
I know you're on the right side though. I saw you stand up. You're like protesting against Nora. Thank you. Um, I'm a mother, um, um, let's see, oh my gosh, um, well.
Hold on just a second. Let's restart. I, I don't know what you're trying to look at there. I don't know if you're just nervous, but just take a deep breath. We want to hear what you have to say.
Yolanda, this is the Santee California City Council meeting.
I spend my time here a lot in East County. I know the problems in the area. There's a lot of predators in this area specifically. Actually, I used to be a teacher here at the Lakeside Union School District and I have family here. Another thing, um, is that I, the same things sentiments that other people have said. Um, I'm not anti-gay. I'm not anti-anything but anti-predator. I, I am. It's just an attack on women. It's, um, I don't know. What else am I gonna say? Um, but, um, just thank you, you know? I know, um, that you guys are trying your best at, you know, you're, you're, you had been appointed to, um, the Sandag, um, seat and, you know, the weighted vote took place. And that's also something that I'm working in Chula Vista. And we're, you know, collaborating with, um, people there so that we can make our voices heard. Um, because I do care about my community and where I'm at. So of course I'm here, um, because I, I know that my heart is also here and I'm here, you know, standing for truth and for the children. And, um, I think that's it. But if you guys can't see me, you guys are big hits because I identify as a.
Next speaker is John Parker. No John Parker, so we have Johnny. Ramon, yes.
How's it going everyone? I've been, uh, really grateful that you guys and this room's been a lot more cordial than the Oceanside room I was in last night. That place was the most belligerent and hostile place I've ever been in my life. And I went to a university. And so I'm from Monterey, California. My name is Johnny Ramon, emerging author, emerging, uh, politician here in San Diego. And I went to Point Loma Nazarene. I got my bachelor's in psychology. And so we looked at a lot of these things that are coming up tonight in the DSM four and the DSM five. And I'm still quite young. And so I was born into a nation in decline. So I've only ever known a nation in decline and arguably the most rapidly declining state in the union. Um, so as a man of faith, I, I, I want to liken this to the famous Trojan horse that I learned in my history classes. So what we're seeing right now are these Trojan horses that have entered America. And they've come in the name of feminism, secularism, post-modernism, socialism. And once you, I, I believe there's a dimension that goes beyond the physical. And it's that spirit that is guiding the same movement. These people want to take away, it's the same spirit that wants to take away our firearms. It's the same spirit that's in favor of abortion. It is the same spirit that is guiding the LGBT plus minus divided sign community. And it is the same spirit that has risen against Israel time and time again throughout the history of humanity. And even today, they're rising against Israel and the, and the people of God. And I just want to thank you guys for being, and actually listening to the people here tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Kevin Prescott.
Some, some people clearly come with their own agenda of what they want to say. It's like he wasn't really on point. He, I don't know what he was talking about.
Hersch.
Okay. Oh, invincible.
Hello, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here as a duly licensed attorney in the state of California. Don't hate me for that. I have put my practice on hold because now I'm a full-time mama bear. And that is what I'm speaking to you as tonight.
Good.
The reach of your decision on what to do with the YMCA is, has a vast reach, larger than just what reaches on the surface.
Yep.
Trans people are not predators. Predators are predators.
Men who invade women's spaces are predators.
We have to remember that the YMCA partners with and runs the majority of the after school programs for our public school children. We have to make clear the standards that we have for organizations that have their hand, have their finger, have their eyeball on our youngest and most vulnerable. You as council members have a duty, a higher duty to the people in this community that are voiceless. Even though they cannot vote, you have to advocate for them. Everyone here tonight is advocating for them. Children have a right to a childhood. This country and this county, its radical gender ideology coupled with the war on women and the war on childhood is ruining childhood for children. How sad is that? The bottom line is that the rights of an adult to identify to, as to whatever gender they want, do not trump the right to a child having a childhood. Where does the line stop? Have you heard of what a MAPS is? M A P S, Minor Attracted Persons. Are we gonna be in this room a year from now saying the YMCA allows maps into that locker room? Because that is not okay. I will die for my babies, but I will live for them too. And I will be back at the next meeting too and the next and the next. Do the right thing.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, for sharing that with us. Uh, I want to thank everybody for their patience and staying here, uh, so long. Uh, thank you for allowing us to take that break to get business out of the way. And, uh, I just want to let you know that we continue to work with the YMCA on making the changes that many of you have talked about. Um, I can tell you that I've sent staff there to look at what they can do to redesign their locker rooms, what kind of permits that are needed to do that, and then how we can fast track them to get it done. And, uh, I, I liken it sometimes to throwing the baby out with the bathwater. If we can correct this, you know, the problem with a great solution, then let's do that. And then take some kind of other action if it doesn't help. So, um, one day we're gonna probably bring this back for the council to talk about how we can, uh, do things a little differently. But, uh, we definitely can, um, influence them. And it didn't really take a whole lot because they said they're more than willing to, uh, make this happen. Uh, so along with their, um, redesigning the locker rooms to make things private, they're also going to institute a no nudity policy in common areas.
Who cares? No men in women's spaces at all.
Definitely, uh, been working on your behalf and I forget who it was. I think it was John that came up, uh, and said, you have no idea what we're doing behind the scenes. And the truth is you have no idea what we're doing behind the scenes. But we're listening to you. We've heard what you've said. And what's also important is we've listened to the other side on what they've said. We've talked to people that, um, that, uh, want to make sure that they are not part of the problem. And so this is a lot bigger than just, you know, a city council. We have so many things that we have to do, um, you know, based on state mandates and county mandates. And we're, we don't have, we're not the government that can override any of those. But we can, no, so, stop. But what we can do is we can advocate on everyone's behalf and talk to the people that are in the state, uh, legislature to make the right changes. So, so thank you. Thank you very much. That's gonna close our non-agenda public comment.
Okay. All right. So it looks like I'm gonna keep the, I don't, if they're, if they're done with the public testimony. Oh my, so that has been a long one today. Uh, so that was great. Uh, we heard most people who were giving testimony, uh, were giving testimony, encouraging the city to break their lease. Um, I did see a comment early on. I, I don't remember who said it, but someone here in the chat said, uh, they use the Y for their showers, um, as they're living out of their car. So the Y does. uh, they use the Y for their showers, um, as they're living out of their car, so the Y does serve a purpose for some. Uh, I, I do like what the, what the people here are doing in pressuring the lease to give up the Y. Um, I wish that it could be different in that I know that it does serve a purpose. I wish the Y would be pressured to change their policies. Uh, I really thank everyone for being here so much. I'm probably, I would like to, uh, stay here and chat with you about what we saw. Uh, but I, I unfortunately am, am getting quite tired, and I think that I'm gonna wrap this up. Uh, the speakers were really on fire. Anyone who, um, anyone who didn't wa, uh, catch the beginning, uh, yeah, these speakers were passionate. Uh, most of them were parents, uh, half of them were pastors. But that's not true, not half of them were pastors, but there was a lot of pastors. There was just like so many pastors there. I was like, is the whole town pastors? Um, but this is to say, this is to say, um, you know, I, I appreciate, if you, if you call yourself a pastor, that means you, you think you are a spiritual leader of the community, and I do have to say, as, um, as people who call themselves leaders, they did stand up like leaders. These men were very passionate tonight. They were incredibly passionate. Um, so that was great to see. So many women were passionate. Um, women were showing, also, there's a lot of women showing a lot of emotion. This is very emotional. Um, I, I was surprised to hear that woman didn't know, um, that he was a man because he looks like a man. Oh, Maddie, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you, Leslie, and, and, uh, Turf, Turf, uh, some, uh, I, I for, uh, I, I forget who, um, someone else gave Turf some, one of the Turf, Turf, Spiky Turf, I think. Thank you so much earlier. Um, also, I do want to plug myself, just you guys, because I, I pay to host this livestream service, and it's a, it's a, I pay yearly, and my yearly, um, renewal is coming up, and I am a bit short on my yearly renewal, so uh, anyone who is able to, um, uh, give me a chat or donate, I have my PayPal link and my, um, also my, um, buy me a coffee link in my Twitter, in my YouTube bio. Um, anyone who is able, I don't give ever if you're not able, but if you are able, um, I could use the help, because it's, I'm just, I'm a little short. Um, so I, I could use some, some help sending it, and, uh, and whenever I ask, know that I just, I'm talking to people who have, uh, who, who have a little, uh, extra to give. Um, so I'm, that's who I'm speaking to. Judy, thank you so much. I appreciate you so much. I also want to announce and remind everyone that on the twelfth, oh, thank you, thank you, Leslie, I appreciate it. Um, on the twelfth, there is going to be a, um, uh, a livestream in Florida. Uh, we have Shelby who is gonna be there in person. It is gonna be livestreamed. I'm not doing the livestream this time. Uh, WLRN is gonna livestream it on their channel. Thank you, Turf, um, uh, you've got Turf Mill. I, I really appreciate the help, you guys, that it, it makes a big difference. Um, I, I pay for the service because I think it's really important to have, and I think it's really important um, to reach a wide audience, and it enables me to do, to do a lot of, um, things while we're streaming. Uh, so that's, that's why I, I just go ahead and do it, because I, I really think that keeping a record of our descent is, uh, important. But I ha, I had a different job last year, um, so my, my finances are just a little different, so I'm working it out. It's getting better, it is getting better, but it's just a little different. Um, Bobina, thank you so much. I, I appreciate you guys all. Um, I also wanted to say, for those of you who haven't checked out my Substack, do please check out my Substack. Um, it's free to subscribe. There are, of course, also, um, subscriptions that you can pay for. That's another way to support me. Um, but right now, I have a great piece up. It's called, um, uh, Sex Mimics Are Mimics. The, um, the link, I'm gonna put the link down there. Yeah, just share, if you are broke, just share my links. Um, that really helps. It, um, liking helps, leaving a comment in the chat helps. Sharing helps. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to support. There's, there's not just one way, so I really appreciate it. Um, also, go check out my Substack, so to, um, I think either on Friday or maybe on Saturday, I'm gonna host uh, a chat back, and I, I see you've got Turf Mill, you were asking me to do a call-in. Uh, I am gonna do a call-in, and I wanna, I wanna talk about this article. I did, uh, an article called Sex Mimics Are Mimics. I talk a little bit about animal mimicry. I talk about uh, magic and magic words, like how magic words function. Uh, and I talk about, you know, as I always do, safeguarding and embodiment and boundaries. Um, I always find ways to tie that into there. Uh, so if you wanna, uh, read it or don't read it, you, you actually don't have to read it to come. Um, but I'll just be talking a little about it, because I know some people like to read and have a talk back, and some people don't want to read, um, but they still want to hear the information that I'm talking about. So I'm gonna do that later on this week. Um, I hope you can join me, and, uh, I just want to thank you all for being here. Um, uh, VF555, you got Turf Mill, uh, Cat, I am, uh, Bobina, thank you so much. Uh, uh, Lindsay, thank you for being here, Chicanafeminista, uh, fuck yo mama. I shouldn't say that online, but thank you so much for being here. Uh, Ghost. Um, Maddie, thank you so much for being here. Judy C., thank you for being my moderator in the chat. Um, you were on it, because I didn't even see that troll that people were saying. Spiky Turf, thank you so much. Um, Laura, thank you so much. I appreciate you. Uh, Shelby, I can't wait to see you speak again. Uh, Oak Town Girl, thanks for being here. Uh, Rasputin, Marshmallow Minion. Uh, May, thanks for being here. Um, Turf Pride, thank you very much. Uh, Vix Logic was here, Stone the Crow was here, Rex Landy was here, who had to leave. Uh, Darian, thanks for being here. Heidel, um, uh, who else we got? Um, oh, someone, I can't read your name. Um, Mr. Yolanda, you were here, I saw you. Turf Pride was here. Uh, Stone the Crow, I think I might have already said you. Sapphire, I'm just trying to see everyone. I may be missing some people. Dana. Um, thanks for being here. Christina Goki was here, thank you so much. Um, so I thank you guys all, because, uh, the, these, um, uh, uh, events, um, the, what these events are, allow us to do, it allows us to have a watch party. Um, it allows us to, um, watch and reflect on these events together. Uh, and I think it's, it's really important to kind of witness it, watch it as a community, and I like, I like kind of the feedback uh, and talk back that we, we get to do. Uh, so I, I really appreciate you all, and, um, I will, I'll try to put some timestamps in this. Someone has been telling me I need to put timestamps in my video. So I'm gonna try to put some timestamps with some of the, um, like, some of my favorite speakers who were speaking, so if you want to share it with people, they can, they can skip to kind of the most, like, exciting speakers. Uh, but I feel really good about what we saw tonight, especially those of you who were at the last city council meeting that we aired, uh, that did not have as many speakers, uh, from our position, so. And it seemed like people had really, uh, actually good points to be made. Uh, so yes, uh, I thank you all for being here, and I am going to wish you a wonderful good night. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Bye-bye.